On the one hand is made by officers of the authority, or on the other hand is made by members of the authority, we submit that's not a relevant difference for two reasons. First, officers no doubt are in practice every bit as much committed to the authority's interests, including the authority's financial interests, as members of the authority are. Secondly, homelessness reviews can be considered by a panel of members rather than by an individual officer. The Court has seen subsection four of section 202 of the Act that on a request for a review being made, the authority shall review the decision. It's then a matter of delegation within the authority under the Local Government Act, what the manner of delegation is going to be, and it can either be to a panel of members, it can't be to a single member, or to an officer, and it can equally be one or the other in constitutional terms. And then, my lord, in the procedure regulations, in dealing with who is to make the decision on the review, that's regulation two, where the decision of an authority on a review of an original decision made by an officer of authority is also to be made by an officer, so it may or may not be the case that it is going to be made by an officer, but if it is made by an officer, then the officer must be a different officer and someone more senior to the original officer. But it doesn't have to be an officer at all to whom it's delegated, it could be delegated to a panel of members, and therefore not so very different from the Housing Benefit Review Board. Now, I mentioned shortly before the short adjournment the case to which I was about to come, in our submission, a very important case, decided since the Court of Appeal decision in this case, and indeed since the argument in the Ayn Croydon and Emma Lambeth cases in July of this year. It's the decision of Crompton and the United Kingdom, decided at the end of last month, and it's in volume six of the authorities, at tab thirty-seven. And we submit that it's an important case, not least, because it clearly demonstrates that Saffio is a case about general principles, not exclusively about housing benefit, and that Saffio is in the mainstream, and not a decision that's to be shunted into a siding. The case concerned the Army Board, which was held not to constitute an independent impartial tribunal for Article 6.1 purposes, when dealing with assessing compensation payable to a member of the territorial army who brought a redundancy complaint, and this is a case in which the Court concluded that an application for judicial review by the individual concern did have sufficiency of review to remedy the lack of independence. It is the reasoning by which the Court came to that conclusion in that particular case that is instructive, and there's certainly that there is no suggestion in Crompton that a key feature about Saffio is the counsel having been a judge in its own cause, or the position of the decision having been made by members rather than officers. What one sees is that Saffio is again and again treated as being of wider importance in its particular factual context. At paragraph fifty, on page seven of the decision, under the heading D towards the bottom of the page, the scope of judicial review of administrative decision-making, the Court observes that the scope of judicial review in administrative decision-making in the United Kingdom is set out in the court judgment in Saffio. Then turning to the law, and halfway down page eight, the applicability of Article Six to the proceedings, the government accepted that the African civil rights were determined in the domestic proceedings and Article Six was applicable, so this is an authority on the sufficiency of review element, and the Court's assessment is from towards the bottom of page eleven, little b, the Court's assessment, and then Roman one, general principles, beginning with paragraph forty. The Court recalls that even where a judicary body determining disputes over civil rights and obligations does not comply with Article 6.1 in some respect, no violation of the convention can be found if the proceedings before that body are subject to subsequent control by a judicial body that has full jurisdiction and does provide the guarantees of Article 6.1. So the question is always whether there is or is not full jurisdiction. Paragraph seventy-one, the Court has previously held that in order to determine whether the Article Six compliance second tier tribunal had full jurisdiction or provided sufficiency of review to remedy a lack of independence in the first instance, it was necessary to have regard to such factors as the subject matter of the decision appealed against, the manner in which that decision was arrived at, and the contents of the dispute, including the desired and actual grounds of appeal, see Brian and Saffio. In Brian, the Court found it reasonable that the jurisdiction of the High Court to review findings of fact made at first instance be limited to considering whether the findings of fact or the inferences based on them were perverse or unreasonable. It reached that conclusion in light of the specialised area of law in issue in the dispute and the expertise of the inspector in establishing the facts and exercising discretion on a wide range of policy matters. Accordingly, judicial review in that case offered sufficiency of review and the proceedings complied with Article 6.1. The Convention organs followed the approach set out in Brian to find that judicial review did provide sufficiency of review in a number of cases against the United Kingdom, and they're then mentioned, including the Stefan and Kingsley cases. So one sees that Brian is explained by reference to specialised area of law and expertise of the inspector in relevant respects. Then paragraph seventy-three, however, in Saffio, the Court reached a different conclusion, concluding that the decision-making process was significantly different from previous cases, whereas in Brian, the issue to be determined required a measure of professional knowledge or experience, and the exercise of administrative discretion pursuant to wider policy aims. In Saffio, the board was deciding a simple question of fact, namely whether there was good cause, the applicant's delay in making a benefit claim. On this question, the applicant had given evidence to the board, but at first she knew that anything was amiss, that her claim was when she received a notice from her housing association landlord to re-possess because the rent was in arrears. The board found her explanation to be unconvincing and rejected her claim for back payment of benefit, essentially on the basis of their assessment of her credibility. No specialist expertise was required to determine this issue, nor could the factual findings in Saffio be said to be merely incidental to the reaching of broader judgments of policy or expediency, which it was for the democratically accountable authority to take. Accordingly, the Court concluded that judicial review proceedings did not offer, in the circumstances raised in Saffio, sufficiency of review in light of the fact that the High Court had no jurisdiction to rehear the evidence or substitute its own views as to the applicant's credibility. As a result, the central issue in the dispute was not determined by an independent and impartial tribunal. So one sees there that Saffio is characterised as concerning a simple question of fact, based on an assessment of credibility, not requiring specialist expertise, and not incidental to the reaching of broader judgments of policy or expediency. And then the Court goes on to the application of the general principles to the facts of the case, and one sees at paragraph seventy-seven that the Court considers that there's a legitimate concern that the Army Board lacked the necessary structural independence.
Just going back to Saffio, in summarising Saffio, the Court in this case leaves out paragraph forty-seven for some reason, it just skips it, skips forty-seven in Saffio.
They certainly leave out forty-seven in dealing with the potential relevance of Saffio in Crompton, if not more generally, and it no doubt is a feature that obviously is not necessarily unique to Saffio and Housing Benefit Review Boards as they were, but which is a particular consideration, which was obviously not thought in Crompton to be of central importance for general purposes in the way that the other statements in Saffio were.
It goes back to Saffio a bit later on, just on page fourteen, just towards the end of paragraph seventy-seven.
Yes, I mean you can get round it, if the sufficiency of... Sorry, are you still searching?
Ah.
Yes, you've got it.
Yes. My lord, that's treated in Crompton as being something that is relevant in relation to Saffio itself, but not relevant in relation to Saffio's more general applicability. And therefore indicates that one shouldn't take paragraph forty-seven as being even an alternative, well certainly not as being crucial to the decision in Saffio.
So what are the general principles that form the subject matter of the headnote just above paragraph seventy-four? Is it just simply that you determine whether the, what they say is the subject matter of the decision appealed against is a simple question of fact on the one hand, or something requiring specialist expertise on the other?
If it involves policy or expediency, discretion, democratic accountability, any of those features, and in particular if it requires expertise, and any factual disputes, if there are any, are merely incidental, then those decisions are on one side of the line, including, as in Saffio itself, or if an issue arose under subsection three of section two hundred and two of the homelessness provisions, a question of whether or not there's good cause for extending time, that's one side. The other side is the case where, if there are any factual matters at all, they are merely incidental, and where the essential decisions are matters that do involve expertise, policy or whatever.
Because, sorry, I'm just wondering, going back to paragraph forty-five in Saffio, you remember this is a paragraph where there's a comment on Runa Begum, and just about halfway down there's a quotation, the phrase "only staging posts on the way to much broader judgments", have we lost that? Or does that still form part of the inquiry as to whether or not one's dealing with civil right? Sorry, as to the sufficiency of the review? I mean, is it, can one divorce the question from the context? Otherwise, I may have a good deal of satellite dispute as to whether or not something the expert is looking at is just a simple issue of fact before he gets to his, the real kernel of what he's deciding, or whether one can actually take account of the totality of the exercise.
Yes. Well, as Baroness Hale was saying this morning, essentially what is being done in paragraph forty-five is to describe Runa Begum before going on in forty-six to say what Strasbourg Court in Saffio is saying for itself, and the reference to staging posts in paragraph forty-five is not carried over in Saffio, save the last sentence of paragraph forty-six.
That's because it didn't need to in Saffio.
Nor can the, unlike the cases referred to, can the factual finding in the present case be said to be merely incidental to the reaching of broader judgments and so forth.
Which is picked up again in Crompton, yes, line four on page thirteen.
Yes, so whether one describes it in terms of incidental to the reaching of broader judgments, or describes it as staging posts, no doubt it's the same concept, just expressed differently, and that is therefore part of the test.
Thank you.
It does look as if the factor which appears to have weighed most heavily in Crompton in reaching the decision that they did, which was that the judicial review was sufficient in this particular case, was the nature of the dispute.
Yes.
Because the dispute was about the basis of compensation, and as the High Court had been able to investigate how reasonable that was, and form views on it, and they'd also been able to look at the factual dispute about the length of service or something, then in the circumstances it was all right.
Yes.
This is presenting us with a very difficult question, isn't it? Because supposing that there had been a head-on clash of credibility on some point that was necessary for the decision of the case, what would they have done?
Gone the other way in our submission.
Well, rather sounds as if they might have done.
Yes, I mean it is instructive to look at the application of the general principles to the facts, as your ladyship has been doing. In paragraph seventy-seven, they say that the Court considers that the legitimate concern that the Army Board lacked the necessary structural independence in assessing the level of compensation, however, it's not always the case that such circumstances will give rise to a violation. The Army Board had responsibility in the main for making findings of fact, had a large degree of discretion as to the level of compensation, and so forth. However, unlike the cases of Brian and Axe, the exercise of that discretion did not benefit from any specialist knowledge offered by the members of the tribunal in question. Accordingly, there was no compelling reason for the decision on the level of compensation to be made by the Army Board rather than by an independent and impartial tribunal. In this respect, therefore, the Court considers that the circumstances are similar to those in Saffio. There will therefore be a breach of Article Six unless in the particular circumstances of the case, the judicial review proceedings offered sufficiency of review. On this question, the Court notes that unlike in Saffio, the dispute between the parties in the present application did not centre on a question of fact determined by the Army Board, which the High Court had no jurisdiction to revisit. That in our submission is the crucial sentence.
And so that's picking up what we saw in paragraph seventy-one, third last line, the content of the dispute.
Content of the dispute, as one of the three elements set out in Brian. And then this is developed, the central issue was whether the approach to the Army Board in assessing the level of the compensation was appropriate. The Court considers it significant that the High Court examined in some detail how the Army Board had arrived at the figure offered. It's clear that the applicant's criticism was carefully examined by the Court, which reached its decision following an analysis of the approach of the Army Board and an assessment of whether or not that approach was reasonable in the circumstances. As regards the applicant's first criticism concerning the exercise of the Army Board's discretion in calculating the award on the basis of a six-year cut-off date, the High Court was able to review all the relevant factors relating to the decision of the board and to assess whether the approach taken was appropriate. Criticism was rejected on the ground that the board had acted entirely properly in selecting a six-year cut-off date for calculation. In respect of the second criticism regarding the salary base used for the calculation of the award, the Court observes that insofar as there was a factual dispute between the parties as to the applicant's salary at the time of the redundancy, the question of fact was in the event revisited. The High Court had regard to papers supporting the argument that an incorrect salary base had been used, and concluded that further investigation was required, and it was reviewed, and an increased offer of compensation. The applicant does not dispute that the revised salary base used was correct. And then, having regard to the relevant factors as outlined in Saffio, the Court concludes that the High Court on judicial review did have sufficiency of review to remedy any lack of independence of the Army Board. Although the High Court could not substitute its own view as to an appropriate award, it could and did examine both the method of calculation and the base figures used for the calculation, and so forth. The applicant's complaint was therefore determined by an independent and impartial tribunal, so no violations.
So in that paragraph, going back to paragraph seventy-one, they're looking at the desired and actual grounds of appeal, which are taking you into that kind of territory.
Yes. So what is the issue? And if the issue, as here, that the parties are raising before the Court, the county Court, is an issue of primary fact, an issue turning on credibility, then in our submission, both Saffio and Crompton support that that must be dealt with by a Court that will consider the merits, and that it's not sufficient for that to be dealt with in the judicial review way that would be appropriate in a Runa Begum-type case concerned with a question of suitability, or a planning case like Alconbury concerned with policy, even political sometimes issues, and that that is the distinction which is being made.
But I mean, Mr. Goward, I'm beginning to think that really almost the only issue which you are contending for, and all of course you need to contend for in the present case, are, you know, whether this letter's been received, which is a precondition of really an almost discreet question, and an issue which equally could arise under section two oh two, as to whether the authority were entitled to deny a late review, which is the one akin to the other case.
Indeed.
Does one get some help, going back to Saffio, if I might, at page four seventy, at the end of paragraph forty-three, where there's a quotation from Brian, which is really the beginning of this line of jurisprudence, which is showing what is said to be a typical example of the exercise of discretionary judgment in the regulation of citizens' conduct and so on in the sphere of planning. So you would say, well, that's fine, you can, there's a sort of a class of decisions which can fall within that broad umbrella, but this wouldn't be that kind of decision, and the area of dispute identified by the grounds of appeal don't enlarge it into that area either, you would say.
Well, that's exactly it. My lord, as I mentioned briefly, almost at the outset this morning, the Court of Appeal was impressed by practical considerations. Obviously, the primary point is that practical considerations ultimately can't prevail over what the law requires, but in our submission, in any event, the practical considerations or the practical difficulties that are alleged are at best exaggerated. My lord, there are no doubt a spectrum of situations. At one end of the spectrum are cases involving policy, even political decisions, or the exercise of discretion, cases such as Alconbury, areas for the exercise of expertise and subject to democratic accountability, where the role of the Court is appropriately limited to light-touch judicial review or an appeal on light principles. At the other end of the spectrum are cases like the present, involving no more and no less than a dispute of primary fact. Questions of policy, of discretion, of democratic accountability do not come into it, and on the contrary, we say resolving disputed issues of fact and assessing the credibility of witnesses is par excellence, the expertise of judges. In the middle are the cases involving a mixture of the elements, and if then the dispute is predominantly not about factual, is not about fact-finding and the factual findings are not discreet, then the case will be treated in accordance with its predominant characteristic, even though incidentally there may be some issues of fact to be resolved on the way. My lord, in our submission, that's a perfectly coherent scheme in principle, and no more difficult to apply in practice than many distinctions are made, distinguishing between on the one hand primary finding of fact cases, and on the other hand cases where either findings of fact don't arise at all, or if they do, they're just ancillary or incidental or staging post findings of fact. A distinction, one which Judge Macduff QC, as he then was in Ali, in our submission rightly recognised, is a distinction perfectly capable of being made, and in our submission it doesn't give rise to any undue practical difficulties, a simple question of categorisation. One asks oneself the question, is the case essentially a dispute about what the primary facts are, or is it about something much broader to which any factual issues are subordinate?
I'm sitting in the Shoreditch County Court, and I'm thinking I've got a section two oh four appeal, and I now have to look at the essence of the dispute and ask myself, well, is it predominantly one of fact and credibility, or is it predominantly one of... And where does suitability go? Because, you know, there may be all sorts of bits and pieces in that, but it's essentially a question of fact, the fact that it involves expert evaluation, so to speak. It's an unrealistic situation that you've got, the distinction between questions of law, the distinction between judicial review type grounds, and the rest, full merits review, determination of disputed issues of fact, that is something we all understand, we've brought up on it, we can do. This is sounding very, very tricky indeed. When is it a pure issue of fact, a simple fact, not difficult fact? I can do the simple facts, but I can't do the difficult facts.
Well, perhaps...
This isn't necessarily an argument against you, Mr. Goward, it's just I'm trying to imagine myself back into the Shoreditch County Court.
It may be that the description "simple dispute of fact" as distinct from dispute of fact is not very illuminating, because questions of credibility of witnesses, of course, may be very difficult to resolve if the witnesses on both sides, either both appear to be truthful, or more commonly, both appear to be untruthful. How do we decide what your decision is going to be? Now, that is bread and butter for judges and recorders and others in the Shoreditch County Court. As to how a judge is going to approach the matter, in our submission, essentially, he approached the appeal in the way he or she would approach any other appeal, and we look at the grounds of appeal, and it may be quite clear, just looking at the grounds of appeal, that the appeal is not about a matter of fact at all. It may, on the other hand, be totally clear from the grounds of appeal that the only issue that is raised is a dispute of fact. So there are going to be some cases which the answer is going to be straightforward. Of course, as with any distinction, there may be grey area cases, there may be cases which it's not immediately apparent whether the issue is to be regarded as one of fact or as one requiring expertise, or it may not be, there may be elements of both.
What's he to do? I'm lost.
Well, we have the benefit...
Can I just put the point to you? Sorry, I'm too interrupting, but it's section two oh four tells me, if I'm sitting there, that my jurisdiction is limited to determining a point of law.
Yes.
Right, there we are, I mean, we understand what that means.
Yes.
But assume that we've got over the hurdle of identifying an issue as a simple issue of fact, what am I to do? That's not an issue of law. Do I decline jurisdiction? Do I send it somewhere else, or do I follow the reasoning in Adan, or what?
My primary submission is that one follows the reasoning in Adan. If that doesn't work, then one's into a section four declaration of incompatibility situation, because one is arguing, of course. because one is arguing, of course, that where the statute says appeal on point of law, that in order to achieve convention compatibility, that should include an appeal on point of fact and that the judge should, in the appropriate case, hear witnesses, have cross-examination, make his own or her own findings in relation to credibility and in relation to whether a letter, for example, was received or not, whether there was good cause for extending time or not.
Just help me on that last point, this extending of time. I mean, how does it work? I see under two oh two three, there it is, it's for the authority in writing to decide whether they allow longer. I mean, I don't know if there's ever been one of these cases. I mean, does somebody writes from the council saying, terribly sorry, we don't think, we don't think, we think it's too late, you can't. How do you challenge that?
Well, that would be a judicial review challenge. Although the authority is the primary decision-maker, the decision is on normal principles, subject to.
So that's straight JR, is it?
That.
Have we ever had such a case?
Not.
No, until the.
Mr. Zabi is mentioning a case of C V Lewisham Council, I think a decision of the Court of Appeal, but not a reported one.
Well, perhaps tomorrow somebody might have a look at that.
Yes.
But I mean, all right, we'll put that aside. I mean, take our case. I mean, are you, are you basically sort of saying, well, here is this requirement that there has been receipt of this letter as a precondition of the entitlement of the authority to say, we have fulfilled our duty, we owe you no more, nothing else? Can you, can you seek to isolate that and say that, there it is, that's a perfectly straightforward issue of fact, issue of credibility, no expertise? And the county court judge can say, all right, on a review, well, I'm prepared to hear evidence on that, somehow stretching his jurisdiction and point of law, but obviously if you, if you lose on that, and then we're into suitability, which is the other basic ground of review, well, then there it is, it's straight looking at the facts as found by the authority.
Yes, that one would have, which in our submission would be perfectly workable, a situation where one body was making decisions on the basis of facts as found by another body, in other words, that the court would have the last word on whether, on an issue of fact, on an issue of credibility as to whether or not a letter had been received. If it found as a fact that the letter had been, well, if it found as fact the letter had not been received, then that would be the end of the case. If it found that the letter had been received, then the decision on suitability would be a matter for the authority and the court would approach that issue only on a judicial review basis.
What's the policy here? Because you seem to be saying that it's only in easy cases that the individual has these rights. Once we, once there are difficult questions, the rights are much more restricted.
No, that's, with respect, my lord, not the distinction because an issue of, resolving an issue of fact, resolving an issue involving the credibility of witnesses is not by any means necessarily an easy decision, whereas a question as to whether or not something is suitable might in a particular case be a relatively easy rather than a difficult decision. The distinction is not between easy and difficult. The distinction is between decisions that are peculiarly appropriate for judicial expertise, credibility issues, the finding of facts on the one hand, and issues on the other hand, which are issues primarily for administrators because they require a particular kind of specialist expertise, which judges in general, and certainly by virtue of being judges, lag, but which administrators, having regard to their experience, have.
But some questions of suitability, it's so difficult, isn't it? I mean, Miss Ali may have got herself her facts wrong because she was confusing the two different offers that she'd got within weeks of one another, but the reason that she gave for turning down the offer, the homelessness offer, was that this was a flat somewhere up on a tower block and there wasn't a lift. And she had two young children. Now, that's not an expertise issue. That's a simple issue as to whether it is suitable for this woman in her circumstances with her children to have to go to a particular sort of accommodation which does or does not have a lift.
Well, it's an expertise issue in two senses. First of all, the question of whether or not something is an expertise issue or not looked at from the perspective of the judge in the Shoreditch County Court, is that yes, suitability is an expertise issue because the House of Lords in Runa Begum has said that suitability is an issue of that kind. But secondly, it is indeed an expertise issue because the person who is judging whether or not it has been reasonable to refuse an offer, or to put it another way, whether the accommodation is suitable or not, is taking account not only of the particular circumstances of the particular family, but also in that respect of the general housing situation in the neighbourhood, what resources are available, what other claims there are by other families made on it, the size of the waiting list, how many other homeless families there are, how many properties there are that are not in tower blocks, and all that, which may not, expertise may not be quite the right word, but it is certainly expert knowledge which the housing officer will have and which even an experienced county court judge will not have, save an anecdote from previous cases that they've tried, it's not the first one.
I think you can see an example of what you're talking about at page one two seven in the appendix where Arlene Daniel was setting out her view on the accommodation. This could all have been the subject of evidence before a county court judge, of course, but you see there deployed various bits and pieces of information, which I suppose are within the expertise of the.
There are many households of a similar makeup and that sort of thing, yes.
Mr. Goward, you keep saying this has been a decision on credibility. Actually, in Ali's case, there has never been a decision on credibility because the housing officer on review said, and nobody ever has had an opportunity to dispute it, you agreed you got the letter.
Well, nonetheless, there has been a decision on an issue of fact.
Well, that's not a point against you. Not a point against you. If anything, it's in your favour.
Yes, that.
You know, she has never had, she's never had an opportunity actually to say what, this was all a terrible misunderstanding insofar as you thought I was admitting receipt of the letter.
Yes, and that's the problem, that the factual issue has never properly been tried out. And one sees also that in Mrs. Ibrahim's case, there's a question of two letters in the same envelope.
I mean, that's different because there was the issue before the housing officer on review who resolved it. I mean, that case is actually, the way you've been describing both these cases, that was an issue of credibility.
But nonetheless, in terms of the way in which it was resolved in Ibrahim, I mean, if one looks at the different signatures on different letters from the, from the housing officer, it all appears very mysterious as to why one communication was sent in only one envelope, in one envelope, and then two letters were sent in another envelope when they were sent to a different address, why that was, why that was done. And it cries out for further investigation if the facts on what are entirely matters of fact are to be properly assessed, very different from the question of reasonableness or otherwise of the attitude that a family takes, given the needs of other families that the authority also has to have proper regard to. So in our submission, the dividing line is not one in which, in the generality of cases, it will be difficult to draw.
What about decisions under section one seven seven?
Well, that is a reasonableness issue.
Yes, but it depends upon the probability of domestic violence.
Yes, well, that I would say was an issue of fact, not perhaps as conspicuously an issue of fact as whether a letter's been received or not, but an issue of fact nonetheless as to whether there is a probability on the evidence of domestic violence. Again, it's an issue of the thought that judges are well-equipped to resolve and which does not require knowledge of local housing circumstances in order to be able to resolve it. But that's not to say that one may not find an instance where, one could put arguments either way as to which side of the line a particular provision fell, but a line has to be drawn and in our submission, we are very clearly on the right side of it. And that therefore a result should be achieved by which that, a result should be fashioned by which that may be achieved, and that the real issue is whether that can, given the language of the, of section two oh four, be arrived at by reference to section three of the Human Rights Act in the Adan way, or whether it has to be by way of a declaration of incompatibility. We commend the Adan approach and the section three route, but it's perhaps unnecessary for me to take that point further at this stage, given that you're going to hear conflicting arguments from the other parties in relation to that question.
Yes, so we end up, as you put it in paragraph eighty-three of your case, that either we do that or we make a declaration that, as it stands, section two oh four one is incompatible. I mean, we remit on the basis of Adan, as I understand it, you'd be right, that the county court has sufficient jurisdiction within the provision to enable him to investigate issues of fact as issues of fact, you say. But if that's wrong, then we make a declaration.
My lord, yes.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you, Mr. Naby. Do we shall add? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Arden.
Lord, lady, the first point to make is that we make, we made no submissions on issue one in the Court of Appeal, none made on behalf of the authority at all. We support the government's position in the sense that we do not, that we do doubt that our administration of the dispersal of various forms of benefit equiperates to determining civil rights, at least in a traditional understanding of civil rights. And local authorities have been tackling issues like homelessness for decades, if not centuries, but really, it seems to us, it's not really an authority's business or interest to be engaged in denying rights. So really, we approach issue one with equanimity. We don't mind whether applicants' rights are characterised as being civil rights or not, because the important point for us is that we act fairly in our administration. For that reason, and doubtless because she'll do a better job of it than I, I'm not going to make any submissions on issue one. Therefore, we're going to move directly to issue two, pretty much on the Runa Begum basis, that we're assuming a breach of civil right, although we would share the view of Lord Walker in Runa Begum and Lady Hale in Croydon, that it's very much at the edge. I think the lordship went a little further than that, since I'm not going to make submissions, obviously I won't. Can I identify our summary contentions in opening? We say that the cases, both domestic and European, are clear. But whether or not there is a requirement for a full fact-finding review by an independent body in any given case depends on a relationship between a number of factors as set out in Bryan, and there are three. The subject matter, the manner in which the decision was arrived at at the first stage, and the content of the dispute. Now, can I pause there just to highlight, your lordships, your ladyships have all seen that passage and those several passages several times, all three points are made. We're way apart from, my lady friend, as to the meaning of A, the subject matter. That does bring in the nature of the scheme emphatically.
Brings in what?
The nature of the scheme.
Subject matter of what?
The subject matter of the dispute, lord.
We've got content of the dispute of C, that's different, is it?
That's different, otherwise it has no meaning. So it's the nature of the decision, it is the area in which we are working, what the issues are, what the scheme is, and so on.
Well, it does say subject matter of the decision appealed against.
Yes, my lord.
So you look to see what the decision was and what its subject matter is.
Yes, but otherwise, the content of the dispute has no real meaning, otherwise they become the same thing with respect.
You say the fact that the subject matter is the provision of short-term accommodation for people who are homeless, in the context of this particular scheme, makes it different from a scheme which has to do with financial benefits, with hard-edged conditions of entitlement and the like. You say that comes into A.
Yes. Or indeed, a scheme that is so wide that it cannot properly, it can only be vaguely called a scheme, as in Crompton. Because if one looks in Crompton at the section under consideration which gave the jurisdiction, it really is any complaint whatsoever, it's not confined to issues of redundancy in Crompton. The Army Act section goes to any complaint against anyone, I think, other than one's commanding officer. But I don't want to go too far away from identifying my summary contentions, if I may. In our submission, Runa Begum followed Bryan. Indeed, in Saffio, they say so. The House of Lords placed a great deal of emphasis on the first of the three, the nature of the scheme, some too on the second, the nature of the procedure, and relatively little, if any, on the third. And to address the scheme under part seven as a whole, even though the House of Lords was well aware there were numerous questions of fact involved at all stages of the part seven exercise. And it rejected, as in whatever terms, an undesirable approach, have an appeal on a point of fact in some individual cases, this is the practicality issue. This is the Runa Begum approach. And if it's correct and remains correct, then clearly it disposes the case and, of course, that is our principal submission. Runa Begum was not doubted in Sfio. I beg leave to point this out. While it may constitutionally be the case that the European Court, Strasbourg, should not be approving or disapproving judgments the courts here. In fact, it does say when it wishes to. I suspect that your lordships may have seen the decision in McCann which canvassed the decision in K and said that it preferred the views of the minority. So it does cross that line. It doesn't follow actually that it won't say if it thinks something is wrong. In any event, Runa Begum was certainly not doubted, that much I can assert with force, nor was it doubted in Cromton. It was not doubted in Sfio or Cromton. Nor does either of those cases purport to represent any new line, as Strasbourg thought. It's not being suggested that this is a new approach that's evolved to questions of fact in the way that Lord Huffman analyzed, for example, the encroachment of Article eight six into issues of administrative discretion in Runa Begum. It's not suggested in either of those cases that Runa Begum failed to apply Brian. To the contrary, Sfio expressly says that Brian was applied. Therefore, it does not seem to us that either case affords any basis from departing from or reconsidering Runa Begum. And to a certain extent, that's the precedent issue, although when I come to it, I shall deal with it very shortly indeed because the principles are all too well-known. The third of our summary contentions. Sorry, that was the third.
What was the second?
Was the second, yes. But Runa Begum followed Brian?
Yeah, the first was that the cases are all uniform and summarized it in Brian. Two, Runa Begum followed Brian. Three, Runa Begum should not be departed from. There's no basis for it. Four, then while there is of definite, if that is not sufficient, then of definition, there has to be some difference between Runa Begum on the one hand and Sfio and Cromton on the other. Which the Adlent says it's all about an issue of pure fact. And Runa Begum wasn't, although when we come to it, we'll see, was described pretty much as factual. Part at any rate. Sfio does not say in our submission, any factual issue requires a fact-based review. Only that in the circumstances of that case, applying Brian, taking all three points, there was such a requirement. And the points of distinction were that the procedure at first below was unsatisfactory and that is the impartiality issue of the board. Clearly was a feature in Sfio, so it's drawn out in Cromton or not. It's respectfully undeniable that it's there. And the nature of the dispute, but the context of it is also important. That is to say, it falls within a well-established line of what's been held to be a civil right, which is to say welfare benefits. There is a great deal of difference between housing benefit and homelessness. Housing benefit is indeed largely fact-based. It is inherently non-specialist and I make that good by pointing out that its review was to members. With no disrespect to members, I remind the board, Mr. Gaddy, of course, always airs on the member side, having once been a member of a local authority. Members are really the laypeople in the local authority partnership between officers and members. They are not specialists. Some may obviously have individual specialisms, but constitutionally or structurally, they are lay and they are elected as such. Lords, my lady, in the disagreement between Lord Justice Laws in Beeson.
In what?
Beeson, B-W-E-S-O-N, who said that the extent to which a scheme was concerned with facts was a germane consideration. Lord Huffman expressly disputed that in Runa Begum. Said it's not relevant, the extent to which it's about fact. He was far more concerned with the nature of the scheme, i.e. it's a welfare scheme, the administration of housing, and it's the sort of scheme that's always been left to administrators. Lord, in that dichotomy, it may well be said that Europe is closer to Lord Justice Laws than Lord Huffman. But we certainly submit that it is germane that Sfio has decided the context of something which is a fact-based scheme which always went to a non-specialist review. Whereas in homelessness, of course, we are predominantly concerned with the location of facts in specialist questions such as intentionality, reasonable to live together, reasonable to continue to occupy, suitability, availability. There are many, many questions. In the overarching of questions, even though we entirely accept my lady's proposition that many of them turn absolutely on a simple, less simple question of fact. Nonetheless, the context is the administration of scarce resource by professional housing officers. And it is relevant to note, while my learned friend asks the court to conclude that the procedure in Sfio was, in housing benefits, was markedly preferable or better than that in homelessness reviews. In our submission, there's a degree of subjective judgment in that. And certainly in Sfio, the procedures in homelessness and Runa Begum were considered to be substantial procedural safeguards.
Well, if I'm right in recalling the detail, there was a right to a hearing, wasn't there? Witnesses could be examined. Right to representation, that kind of thing.
Yes, you have a right to represent.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, my lord. Sfio was the one in which there was a right to an oral hearing.
Yes, sorry, that's what I meant, yes.
And representation.
Yes.
In homelessness cases, it's usually not just desktop inquiries are made and so on. But there isn't a right to an oral hearing. The nature of the review process is that of taking a wholly new decision which may involve new facts as between the first decision and the review. That's been held by this house in a case called Mohammed and Hammersmith. Sorry, by the House of Lords, I'm so sorry.
Do we have it in the bundles?
We don't. We can provide it if needs be.
Sorry, I was elsewhere. What point you just made, Mr. Arden?
I was making the point that there was no right to an oral hearing. Because the procedure on review is that of taking a wholly new decision by the reviewing officer, which includes taking into account of any new facts. And I referred to a House of Lords case called Mohammed and Hammersmith, the reference to which we can give at the end of the day if lordships or ladyships want it.
Lord Slun?
I'm sorry, lord.
Was that Lord Slun's case?
Yes. Yeah, that's it. I can give it to you now.
Yes, please.
Two thousand and one. UKHL fifty-seven. I'm sorry, I don't have enough officials. All we were saying, lord, the point I was making. Point I was making was that it was accepted in Sfio that there were substantial procedural safeguards in Runa Begum. There doesn't seem to be any suggestion that they did consider the safeguards in Sfio to be better. To the contrary, they were certainly vitiated in that case by the actual want of impartiality. Lord, bearing in mind, although I have to say my summary contentions may turn out to be almost as long as my main submissions, but nor in our submission does Cromton say any more than was said in Sfio. That case turns on the very different scheme and I've already referred to that. You see the breadth of the decision-making exercise at thirty-two to thirty-five in Cromton, section one eight, one of the Army Act. Any complaint in respect of which someone thinks they have been wronged. And I stress this was not particular to redundancy or loss of.
Where is that set out in Cromton?
Thirty-two to thirty-five, I hope.
Yes, thirty-two quotes from the Army Act, I see, the point you're getting at.
I'm very grateful. What we are saying is, and indeed it is said later, I shall have to come to it when I come to it or I'll never finish my opening summary, if I may. But it does describe the role of the army board as a very fact-based, usually. But such a broad jurisdiction is weak on point A in Brian, that is to say, the scheme. The nature or subject matter could be simply anything. Unlimited jurisdiction on a particular non-independent body. It could not be saved in every case by the Anderson safeguards, the judicial review procedure. But it could be saved in a particular case where the dispute was not one of pure fact, weighing up, again, weighing up the broadly three Brian features. Neither of these cases, therefore, suggests that a different result would be reached by Strasbourg in the present case. The balance of considerations when you take all three elements into account remains against the need, any need for fact-based appeal or review. Obviously, my final point is that if we lose on all that, then we go to compatibility.
Yes, so that's introduction. If we go back to point one, do we explore it a bit further?
Yes, I go back, I go back to the Runa Begum approach, really. Summarizing again, the cases are clear that that Brian requires consideration of three features. Subject matter, which we say is what has come to be referred to here as the scheme, the manner in which the decision was arrived at and the content of the dispute. And we said that Runa Begum placed most emphasis on the first, some on the second and little, if any, on the third. Addressing the scheme under part seven as a whole and rejecting an approach which has an appeal on a point of fact in individual cases. We think it goes this far that to save exceptionally, for example, where another convention right is engaged, Article three could be engaged in some cases. A judicial review approach is invariably sufficient, whatever the individual points of fact arising. That is to say, the nature of the scheme, its subject matter, its protections means that judicial review is a sufficient safeguard in every case. Lords, my lady, what I propose to do is go through the domestic cases here chronologically on what is required. And I want to start very briefly, if I may, by going back to A. Case of A at tab nineteen in volume four for a very brief. At paragraph thirty-eight. This is for sight of a single point, sight of which may sometimes be lost, which is that proportionality does have a role to play in determining the issue of what Article six requires. It's well established that the guarantee of a fair trial and Article six is absolute, conviction obtained in breach of it cannot stand. The only balancing permitted is in respect of what the concept of a fair trial entails. Here, account may be taken of the familiar triangulation of interests accused, the victim, society. In this context, proportionality has a role to play. Lords, my lady. When considering this issue, we invite you to consider, it's somewhat bizarre to think about contemplating spending the cost of litigation, thus certainly into four figures, to substitute one person, a judge's view, for that of another, an officer, as to whether or not a letter was received. Ninety-five percent of cases, that won't turn on cross-examination. There will be very little but an impression to be formed, yet critical issues, and I'm facing this in the context of the scheme, such as whether or not someone is homeless, priority need, the probable victim of domestic violence, tensionality and so on, are exclusively for the authority.
Lord Stain in paragraph thirty-eight, I think, was, had the forefront of his mind, the typical criminal trial. He refers to the triangulation of interests and you've got the accused, you've got victim and society. Do we? you've got the victim and society. Do we get any hint in Brian or any of these cases since that the Strasbourg Court is seeing that there's a triangulation of interests here, which may affect the way in which one determines whether an issue really is an issue of fact, or is something brought up as sort of web, part of the web of the scheme itself?
Well, it may be said to be embedded in the proposition that Strasbourg has accepted that something less than a full trial is acceptable in areas of administrative decision-making. We would say that that was surely, unless I misunderstand your lordship, implicit in that.
So you say that proposition would only make sense if they were accepting there was a kind of balance of interests?
Absolutely. Because they recognise that all systems, all the European systems have got their areas which are entrusted to administrators rather than judicial determination. Reluctant to say that that is definitive because it could be used to avoid protection of the convention. Even in Brian, I think my Lord, or, which is, where's Brian? My Lord, my Lord Lord Collins may have just drawn a tangent trip. In Brian, they accept.
Where's Brian?
It's volume six, tab.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. It's just a point right at the end. Page, and this is of course, in such an approach by an appeals, I'm so sorry, on the last page, page twelve. I do apologise, I've gone straight into paragraph forty-seven. Lady, been to that before. And of course, it is the passage that says furthermore, even if, which makes the point that in Brian, even if it had been a question of fact, it would have made no difference. It was the area of decision-making that was central. This is quite important, that little quote, because i- if Milneri Friend is right, he's not saying all planning cases will still be safe, as it were. There are often factual issues determined in the planning environment which are determinative. But going on from that, such an approach by an appeals tribunal on questions of fact can reasonably be expected in specialised areas of the law, such as the one in issue, particularly where the fact has already been established in the course of a quasi-judicial procedure governed by many of the safeguards required. It does accept it's not always going to be absolute, was the point I was making, hopefully, in response to, rather than avoidance of your lordship's point.
Yes?
The point we were seeking to make was that in proportionality terms, to, as it were, have the critical issues, homelessness and so on, all determined by an officer, subject only to judicial review, yet to have the question of whether a letter had been received, go the full the full course of judicial inquiry seems to us not merely impracticable, but disproportionate. Nor, of course, is that the end of it, because then you get a new offer and so on. And the want of proportionality is exacerbated in the present cases on their own facts, bearing in mind that we're dealing with discharge of a single application as homeless in each case. This isn't several serial homelessnesss. So Muzali did know there was a one-offer policy. It was notified in the section one eight four letter. It's paragraph two of the SFI.
Sorry, what are we looking at now?
I was summarising the actual facts of these cases, and why we say it doesn't call in all the circumstances for an independent review, making the point because the judge in one of the cases, I'm afraid I forget which right now, describes, I think it's Ibrahim, as technical Ali, as a technical objection. The point I made was that Muzali knew that there was a one-offer policy because it was notified in the original decision letter, so from the off, she knew there was a one-off only policy.
That's the letter of the seventh of November?
Yes.
On page one-one-oh.
Yes, it is, the letter on page one-one-oh, thank you.
I thought the technicality was that she refused it in any event.
Yes, I think that is, nonetheless, whatever the technicality is, I'm seeking to show that there are other considerations which lower the impact of what might otherwise be a fairly egregious breach, which is, we never tell you that this may be it, and that's it.
Sorry, so you mean that the outcome of this appeal could turn on the fact that she got an earlier letter which did tell her?
No, if the outcome of this appeal will turn on the way it's been argued, all I'm saying is that it would be disproportionate in these cases, in these cases generally and specifically, to have to have trials. I'm sorry, my lord, your lordship meant the appeal to county court? Did I misunderstand?
No, I meant, no, I meant the appeal to this court. I mean, I don't understand the relevance of this particular lady having, on an earlier occasion, received a letter such as she disputes having received
I'm arguing that the proportionality, the proportionality is relevant to whether or not a full fact review is called for in a particular case. I'm saying that all she is saying is that she didn't actually get this one letter, but she can't say she didn't know about the policy. And she also indeed knew that that translated into an offer backed by a section one nine three seven statement, because she had been through the process before.
I thought that the dispute actually was about the receipt of the fourteenth of March letter, not the seventh of March.
That's it exclusively. But it is not a dispute with any substance, because she all along knew that it was a one-offer only policy, and from a previous occasion, knew that when an offer was made, it would discharge the authority's duty. That was the point I was making. I don't want to dwell on it. I'm just making that point, that that is what we are talking about.
It's an element of sledgehammer to crack a nut type point, isn't it?
It is, it is, my lady, that's.
And I suppose a comparative point, like, there are these huge issues, like, did you become homeless intentionally, which is a huge issue of fact, which nobody is arguing, at least I don't think he's arguing, ought to be, or maybe he doesn't have to argue it, I'm not entirely sure what he is arguing, but certainly that may be within the area. But that's a huge issue of fact that may be excluded.
And judgment.
Yeah, yeah, but it may be excluded. Whereas this is a comparatively small issue of fact, comparatively easy to resolve. It's a sledgehammer for it to have to go to court. I think that's the point you're making, or something like that.
I call that proportionality, but I'm certainly happy with sledgehammer and that we've made it.
But would you accept, Mr. Oram, that actually, nobody has ever heard this particular lady's case as to why it was wrong to conclude she'd reached, she'd received a letter based on her admission on the telephone, when actually she hasn't had a chance to tell anybody that she didn't, she wasn't making any submissions.
She didn't take it.
I'm sorry?
She had the chance, she didn't take it. It's like, Lord, can your lordship go to paragraph, page one hundred and thirty of the bound volume? I understand what happened, but I should have started at one-two-nine. This is her statement, paragraph seven at the bottom, one-two-nine? She explains she received two offers. She asks whether I had received the offer letter. I believed it was therefore replied, I received it. However, as the conversation progressed, I became aware that I was being questioned about why I had refused Eddington. I informed the caller, this was for a number of reasons, including this fact and that fact. I also meant to explain to the caller that when I had said I received the offer letter, I was referring to the letter in respect of Tervetown. So she did in fact have the opportunity. Your lordship seemed to be saying she never had the opportunity. She had the opportunity, she was, I've just said to your lordship that under Mohammed and Hammersmith, Lord Slun's case, which I think your lordship was therefore familiar with, it is an inquiry that's made by the reviewing officer. If he doesn't make sufficient inquiries, he can be challenged on that basis, as always. The reviewing officer can be challenged in the county court for making insufficient inquiries. He can be challenged for mistaking an established fact. But the public law is fairly clear that when he's not told something put in brackets, which the applicant could have told him, then he's not to be faulted for it.
Well, the way it's put at page one-two-six, going back to Arlene Daniel's letter, is that the conversation really diverted from receipt of the letter to the suitability of the accommodation.
Because that's the real issue.
I mean, she seems to have said, well, actually, you advise you to receive the letter and refuse the offer for a number of other reasons, and then we go into absence of lifts and so on and so forth, and having looked at all those reasons, this being the area of dispute apparently in the conversation, the review officer decides that the duty has been fulfilled.
Yes, but the review officer's not to be faulted for not addressing something he wasn't told that he could have been told. Now, if Muzali said, I didn't understand anything about that, I never understood that it was a different letter, then it may be that we'd be in the area of representations being made and being asked for the officer to reconsider, because at least, hopefully, there's no law of sort of functus officio operating here. It is routinely the case that when further submissions are put in, they will be looked at to see if they make a difference, routinely. And indeed, it'd be quite difficult to operate the protocol, were it not the case, because one always has to consider the other side's case beforehand and so on. But here is a case where she did understand and by implication, forgot, or what have you, I'm sorry, forgot sounds pejorative, and I don't mean to be, these conversations aren't easy, and I appreciate that. Nonetheless, the real area was the suitability, and that's what she addressed. She chose to address that, not the fact that she says she didn't have the letter.
How does this system that was described at page one-one-two work? I'm looking at the letter she got. Sorry, not the letter that was suggested she got, which is in dispute. But let's assume that somebody reads this letter, and it says, we have to offer you accommodation only once. It's a quarter of the way down. This is your one and final offer. And yet, in this conversation, the reviewing officer gets into a discussion of suitability.
Because that is the whole point at the bottom of one-one-two. If you turn this offer down without a good reason,
Right, I see.
I hope it is the case, forgive me. Yeah, it can be any authority.
Yes.
You ask what the reasons are.
Yes, so this really turned into a conversation about the good reason, rather than the the receipt of the letter.
Yeah, it may be, but you know, in some cases, you know, some authorities, particularly that is really of this case now, may well say, you did get that letter, didn't you?
I mean, if the letter had omitted, of course it didn't, but if the letter had admitted this business about if you turn down this offer without a good reason, we won't offer you any more accommodation, then it doesn't it doesn't operate that way. I mean, that's the effect as I understand it, section one nine three five.
Yeah, but that would be a straight point of law.
No, no, of course, of course. No, I appreciate that, but I mean, but that sentence is absolutely critical to the
It's a point of law if it was omitted, but it's not been omitted, it's in there. We ring up, we discuss with her her reasons for refusal. She's been through this process before, she's been told about the one-offer only policy, and indeed, we discuss the offer letter with her. And it's only she forgets to tell us that she was confused about which offer letter it was. Well, Milneri Friend, can I just deal, quite as an aside, just with one thing that may be confusing your lordships, your ladyship, probably not, certainly confused me for a long time, because the facts start with Ali and then go to Ibrahim. And it's Ibrahim which had the two letters in one envelope. But actually, that was before Ali, and the authority did change their procedure as a result of the county court judge's observations.
Yes, Ibrahim was October two thousand and five.
Yes, I'm grateful. But they did change their procedure, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I think the only point I was making is the more technical it is, or the less substance there is, the more disproportionate it is to think of going to a court to have a trial on it.
Could I ask you a question about that, because I'm having some difficulty in understanding how proportionality fits into this argument? If one concentrates on the underlying purpose of examining the question of the sufficiency of the review, I take it that you would accept that the purpose of that review is to assess the capacity to remedy a lack of independence?
No, I very much doubt it. It was to have an internal review because it was not to be decided exclusively on one officer. I don't think it was addressed in those terms, Lord, it was pre nineteen ninety-eight act.
Yes, but I'm not talking about the jurisprudence of Strasbourg.
No, no, I understood that.
What is, if it's not to examine a capacity to remedy the perceived lack of independence, what is the purpose?
To correct any errors or misjudgments by the officer reaching the first decision. They could be legion, nothing to do with want of independence, because the first officer has no greater, either perceived or actual want of independence than the second officer.
It's the appeal to the county court, which is to redress any question of independence.
But that's the context in which I'm asking, what is the purpose?
I'm sorry, my lord, I thought you meant the review.
No, what's the purpose in the examination in the context of the county court? It is surely to remedy any perceived lack of independence?
No, my lord. It's much more pragmatic than that, and as Lord Millet says, and quite correctly, it was a transfer judicial review jurisdiction from the, I can't remember whether it was already the administrative court or the Crown Crown Office list at that time, to the county court, because it was swamping it. It was the second largest user of judicial review homelessness, and it was simply to transfer that jurisdiction, with respect, that I think is a well-known in domestic.
That may have been the motivation, but what is the underlying purpose? You say it's got nothing whatever to do with to redress the lack of independence?
Well, it is to subject the authority to the process of law, as judicial review always does.
Well, I'm sorry, that doesn't convey anything to me, I'm afraid.
Well, I'm saying that it's a public authority, it is susceptible to law, it was acted according to the principles judicial review. But if it was to address the want of independence, then, my lord, surely it would have been a jurisdiction to reach a new decision on the substance?
Well, I consider your answer, I may come back to it.
This was all done before the Human Rights Act. We had a situation, didn't we, in which you've got a standard sort of administrative procedure, you go along to your local authority, you say, I'm homeless, please put me up. Local authority makes various decisions by an officer. Very common in that sort of agency situation to have It's very common in that sort of agency situation to have a review procedure. Benefits had that throughout, for the purpose of correcting errors, basically. Nothing to do with independence, because as you rightly pointed out, they were both equally lacking in independence as such. That doesn't mean to say they lacked impartiality, but they might have lacked independence. Of course, like any other administrative decision, they're subject to judicial review. There was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Arden, but there was a stage at which it was argued that the right to be housed as a homeless person actually gave rise to a right in private law, because it was susceptible to an action for breach of statutory duty if you were not housed.
Or to appeal, but by concession.
Yes, but that all went, but I'm also saying there was a stage at which it was thought that the whole thing could go to the county court as a breach of statutory duty. That was then knocked on the head.
Cox and planet.
Yes, and so judicial review then took off as a way of trying to find points of law to challenge the merits of local authority decision-making in this area. And the administrative court, as it then wasn't, was swamped, just as it is now swamped by a different sort of case.
Well, it was swamped by two, immigration and homelessness.
And both.
Exactly.
In fact, asylum, a tribunal was set up for asylum and the county court was given these cases, but on a strict judicial review basis, and all of that took place some time before the Human Rights Act.
Took place in nineteen ninety six, with a government which wasn't contemplating domesticating the Human Rights Act.
So it wasn't there to remedy lack of independence.
You're absolutely right, I mean, I remember perfectly well that we sent this off to the county court because the Crown Office list was, they also swamped, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I should have made clear that I'm asking about post nineteen ninety eight, post the coming into force of the Human Rights Act. I'm not concerned at all about the situation that pre-existed.
However, there's been no change in the law, other than the nineteen ninety eight act. I mean, there's been no change to the nineteen ninety six act that's relevant to this point, lord.
I think the only change is that we're struggling to keep up with what Strasbourg is trying to tell us and trying to understand what they're trying to tell us.
Yeah, and in particular, the county courts are struggling with this argument being put before them. My lord, I come to Runabagum if I may, and my lord, what I propose to do, sorry, it's volume four, four twenty, volume four flag twenty. With your lordship's leave, I don't propose to read any of it, because it's all been read, we've got it.
Several times.
Many, yes, more than several. What I was going to do was whip through, making my points about what each paragraph on which I rely.
Yes.
Says, very brief order, most of them probably will be so obvious, they don't really need to be taken down, but I'll go through them anyway. Paragraph five is making the point that the more elastic the interpretation of civil rights, the more flexible the approach to Article Six has to be. Strikes me that that is a proportionality point in its own right. I mean, in theory, there's nothing wrong in having, you know, a massive tribunal system for every administrative decision, it would just be rather expensive.
But if all you mean by proportionality is paragraph five of Lord Bingham's speech, well, of course, I'm sure we all understand that.
Yes, but he does say whether the procedure, the procedure that's needed. I mean, my lord, I'm only remaking the same point, but if Lord Bingham has made it, I rely on him. Paragraphs eight. I'd probably put this in for another point, but I don't want to have to come back to it, which would be the compatibility argument at the end. Plain that the county court judge may not make fresh findings of fact. Paragraph nine, your lordships, your ladyships have been to usually, and starting at nine one, his context is not merely part seven, not merely homelessness, the administration of the important social field of housing. So there's a wider, in which there's a wider public dimension, of course, in the traditional conventional civil rights between parties in Europe. These would not have fitted because of the presence of the third party in every case, which is to say those affected by it.
But in any case involving the expenditure of public funds, there's going to be a wider public dimension, I'm not quite sure what he's driving at there.
Well, he's saying first of all, the context is one, because this is the European context as analysed by Lord Hoffman, which is the movement from decisions which are reached by administrative bodies to within the purview of Article Six, and I think he's just setting that scene. The public dimension is perhaps realistic that housing benefit and other welfare benefits, although of course in one sense they make demands on the public purse, they're not capped or limited in any way, unless they change the regulations, as lord, they are certainly doing so very shortly. But until they change the regulations, you're entitled to the amounts you're entitled to. In housing, there's much more give and take in terms of what's suitable, in terms of what's reasonable to do with the actual size of the pot. I suspect that may have been in the back of his mind. Factual findings will only be staging posts on the way to broader judgments. Well, certainly here, actually, it is only a staging post.
Why? I mean, I, that's the one difficulty I have, I mean, it may not matter a fig, but that's the one thing, I'm not at all sure why, it's not a staging post, it's completely independent precondition, terminating the liability of the council under section one nine three.
My lord, learning friend referred very, very briefly and in passing to precedent fact. But he has not argued this case as precedent fact, as was argued in Croydon.
Quite.
It is not one of the issues before this board.
Not a present fact as such, but an independent fact.
Lord, I'm not saying necessarily it isn't a precedent fact, but it's not the way it's been argued. Indeed, that was false sworn in Ibrahim explicitly in the skeleton first issue. So it was a fact for the authority to determine.
Well, it's this kind of fact that in other contexts, one might say you establish in limony, isn't it? I mean, you've got to get over that hump. I mean, may you, if you answer it favourably to the homeless person, then of course you go further. But I can't see at the moment how it can be said to be a staging post to any particular part of the assessment exercise in the way it, for example, a determination as to the condition of a property, you know, the number of people going to a room, that kind of thing is all part of an assessment of suitability, but this isn't that kind of issue.
No, but it is a part of the issue of whether we've discharged our duty, because we also have to say that we offered suitable accommodation. I agree it can be singled out, I entirely understand what my lord, Lord Brown is saying. I agree it could be singled out, but we would say respectfully, if that was right, that would actually be identifying it as a precedent fact. And that is something which could be taken on domestic judicial review.
I don't quite understand that, I'm sorry.
Well, my lord is taking the point, I think, with a view to saying whether an Article Six procedure is needed to determine it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering whether.
Not raising it.
Of course, it's got nothing to do with the actual process by which you decide yes or no is a suitable accommodation. It's a separate, parallel requirement for the authority to show before they can say they've discharged their duty. All I'm wondering is whether for that particular fact, Article Six requires you to follow a more intensive process of review under the point of law, court of appeal, county court procedure, that's all I want.
Yeah, well, I think what I'm answering is, yes, of course, it is a simple or pure point of fact, a separate independent point of fact, but we say, no, if that is right and that you can take particular points and say that is determinative, independent, so on, then you do indeed get a whole range of points which could be taken to the county court on that basis, and we say, no. You take what priority need, whether somebody is my sibling and so on, whether there has been domestic violence.
Can they reasonably be expected to live with you?
Yes, that then, I think, does get a bit more evaluative.
Bit closer and a bit closer to local conditions, I suppose, but it shouldn't. This is the point I was trying to make earlier, I have great difficulty in producing a bright line division, that's it. There are elements of judgment, of course, some of them are just judgment judgment, and some of them are judgment requiring local knowledge, special skills, notion of how many people are living in what sort of conditions in Birmingham and so on. Very difficult to find a.
But I said, all those are staging posts, and I just simply stopped you because you said this is a staging post case.
No, I'm sorry, lord, I was adopting the phrase, but not quite the same way. I was saying, well, it's staging post to a different decision, which was the. That was actually what I was saying, perhaps it would have been better not to adopt the phrase.
Could I just for a moment, if we finish that, take you back to paragraph nine one of Lord Bingham's speech in Runabagum, when you were talking about, or he was talking about, the wider public dimension. And you were asked what he meant by that. But of course, he then refers to Oroc, and he refers to a specific passage in Oroc. So I went back to Oroc, which is at tab eighteen. And the specific passage in Oroc to which he refers is at page one nine three. C to E. And Lord Hoffman there says, the first is that the act is a scheme of social welfare intended to confer benefits at the public expense on ground of public policy. Public money is spent on housing the homeless, not merely for the private benefit of people who find themselves homeless, but on grounds of general public interest, because, for example, proper housing means that people will be less likely to suffer illness, turn to crime, or require the attention of other social services. The expenditure, et cetera, et cetera, that's what he meant by the wider public dimension. He meant there is a public interest in housing the homeless.
I'm grateful, my lady, I'm sure that was what he.
Yes, I'm sure that's what he had in mind.
Because he says to which attention was drawn, I'm sure that's right. I was going to remind, just in the discussion on fact I was having with my lord, Lord Brown, I was also just going to remind your lordships, lady, of section one nine one, which is in volume one, obviously, the first tab, on the point, just to give an example of why we say that there is no, we support, my ladies, there's no bright line, right? A person comes homeless intentionally, if he deliberately does or fails to do anything, now deliberately is judgmental, but there still must be an act or omission, which is a fact, which has to be determined.
I'm not disputing, there's a huge amount of fact in every other aspect of it.
But what we're saying is that if one fact can be said to be determinative or stand independently, then that must apply in all such cases. But my lord, I think I would say this, on a European, on a pure European page, untainted by domestic cases, one would be weighing up all three considerations, the subject matter which we say stands for the scheme, the process, and the individual decision. I think my lady, Lady Hale, said in Right at the House of Lords, Europe has the luxury of sitting there and deciding whether this fact, these facts amounted to a breach or not. We've got to look at scheme and make it work. What I'm saying is that within that framework, what Runabagum set its face against was what I might call cherry picking, factual cherry picking within the scheme.
I mean, could you put it as precisely as saying, well, look at section one nine three subsection five? The whole thing is sort of lumped together in that subsection, because it's not just refusal of an offer of accommodation, but it's got to be a refusal of accommodation which the local authority has satisfied. And there's been a notification and so on and so forth, so that it's, as far as that subsection is concerned, it's putting it into the context of an overall assessment point. It's not isolated, do you follow what I'm suggesting?
I think so, I've not really read subsection seven as that different.
It's five, subsection five I'm looking at.
Yes, I know, I'm saying, I don't think subsection seven is that different, because it still has to be suitable accommodation, which clearly is a matter for the authority.
So the issue really is, has the duty been discharged? Can it be treated as being discharged in the situation where there has been this, that and the next thing?
I'm so sorry, my lord, I didn't, I was going to go on and say, look at subsection six. Vite you do, ceases to be the duty if the applicant ceases to be eligible for assistance. That's a matter of judgment normally for the authority, or, well, very much for the authority. Although I think that's immigration issues actually, eligibility in part seven. And then again, the local housing authority shall cease to be subject to the duty, looking at six B, becomes homeless intentionally, and that's when you bring in the section I just looked at, is riddled with judgment, although with factual elements, preconditions in it. And D, otherwise voluntarily ceases to occupy, and I'm not sure whether that's a question of fact or judgment. It's sort of moved a little bit from fact, but it's not quite as judgmental as suitability or reasonableness, and we are saying that if you take five to seven as a whole. Can it be right that it was intended that one small fact alone or one part of it? Of course, the the homeless person hasn't necessarily lost everything in any event, and again, this goes to the proportionality argument, because at one nine three nine, he or she can reapply.
But how does that work?
You can reapply, for example, on the basis and say, I did not become homeless intentionally.
Well, even when it's been found you have.
You can reapply and ask for a new decision, yes. You may need a period of, a short period of intervening accommodation, but not necessarily no longer, it used to be the case you had to have settled accommodation. Certainly any change of circumstances, certainly any intervening accommodation, you can reapply. Now, if you then feel that you did not get across your failure to receive the letter the first time, actually, the issue would become the same, because the decision here would be, if upheld on a new application, it would be an intentionality decision that you lost it because you didn't accept the offer.
Meantime, meantime, do they have to do anything towards housing or not?
No.
Section one eight eight.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes. If they accept a reapplication from then, yes, from then, I'm saying. If they accept reapplication from then, yes. From then, I'm so sorry.
Did you say if they accept it? I'm sorry. Section one eight eight, subsection one. If they accept it, I think it would follow that they would have reason to believe.
And the House of Lords has said that the circumstances in which you could refuse an application are very, very limited, the case of fire. Certainly, it doesn't require intervening settled accommodation. Question is, has an application been made, and only if it's an identical one to the previous one, does it fall away? I simply make the point that it is not as fatal to the applicant's hopes as it may at first appear. I'm sorry, I was going through Runa Begum.
No, it's our fault. I think we go back to, we reached paragraph nine, didn't we?
I'd move forward, but I was taken back to paragraph nine. Certainly, paragraph ten is well known, which does come in on compatibility. We would be relying on compatibility, says that it would pervert the scheme to allow, to follow the route of contracting out. Not quite the same, but it has some relevance. And at paragraph eleven, it goes back to this theme of flexibility, and the absence of a full fact-finding jurisdiction is not disqualified. That is what Lord Bingham had to say. I pick up Lord Hoffman at thirty one, where the same point is made about the need for modification of the full judicial model.
Let us take you back to the facts in sixteen.
I'm so sorry, my lord.
The reason that her refusal was taken as unreasonable were that there weren't, in fact, serious drug or racial problems in the area. She wasn't believed when she said she'd been robbed, and she wasn't satisfied that the relationship between her and her husband made it intolerable. Now, those are, in fact, completely justiciable questions. They're not like a planning officer. Theoretically, those are justiciable.
I was coming in Lord Hoffman's to where he says this is about facts.
Yes.
It does seem to me. I think intolerable might involve a very small amount of... I may get shot by Lady Hale for saying this.
You will, yes.
But nonetheless, what people have to put up with. I'm not advocating it, my lady, but it may be with an element of judgment. But essentially, there's a factual question, incidentally, of the sort the county courts often rule on. This is why I think, I think we are concerned about how far this will go. And it isn't capable of being confined just to these questions. Not at all, indeed. Melanie French didn't seek to confine them, to be fair. He said it could apply to a number of questions. But we as an authority, with the usual problem of not wanting to spend all our lives and all our housing income in the county court, I obviously don't mind if they do. But we as an authority with that concern, see this, of course, as the first step in the next round. I picked it up at thirty one. These are all well-known points. Thirty three, full jurisdiction as the nature of the decision requires. Thirty four, the same point, extension into administrative decision-making, must accept something less than full review. And at thirty five, this is how, whether something is a civil right and whether Article Six, whether it's Article Six compliant procedure are linked. And then at thirty seven, he sets out the argument, question here, but when, and I think it's at the very bottom of that page, my lord, the point I was going to say to my Lord, Lord Collins, this decision turns on a question of contested fact. And then he addresses exactly the same argument that's being put to the board today. Interestingly, in analysing the background and his own observations in Alcombebury and Bryan, which he identifies as being a case about the application to decisions on fact, yet even in Bryan, as we know, Strasberg accepted judicial review. And then at forty two, he's really making the point, findings of fact seem to be very different from findings of fact, so even though that one itself was exceptional, the rule of law rightly requires certain decisions, paradigm examples of findings that breach the criminal law, adjudications of civil rights being trusted. This basic principle does not yield to utilitarian arguments, be cheaper or more efficient to have these matters decided by administrators, nor is the possibility of an appeal sufficient to compensate for lack of independence, and so on. But utilitarian considerations have their place when it comes to setting up schemes of regulation or social welfare.
Well, you would presumably play a great deal of emphasis on paragraphs forty three, forty four, forty five.
Indeed. I was just going on to do so, and indeed it provides Lady Nadan. And that's right, you know, not an excessive proportion of funds to be consumed in legal disputes. Forty, yeah, I mean, at forty two to forty four, forty five, and therefore leading to the conclusion, it would be inappropriate at forty six, to require that findings of fact for the purposes of administering the homelessness scheme in part seven should be made by a person or body independent. Then addresses in forty seven, the distinction between independence and impartiality, which he certainly draws here and is drawn in other cases, and I'm going to come on to them. And it's been called, I think, in Cronkite, structural, want of structural independence. But does say, as we submit, that Svojow, Bryan, all these cases recognise, that the actual decision-making process is relevant when determining what is needed by way of Article Six appeal.
At the bottom of the page, I'm looking at page four fifty, he's really raising the question as to the difference it would make if it did go to full appeal, bearing in mind that the appellate court or the county court, sitting on an appeal, would not actually see the witness, would not test the witness's credibility in the way it could have been tested at first instance. That's what he's assuming.
He's assuming. Melanie French would say he can and must, and is entitled to have that tried.
So that's what we're really looking at, is whether it's necessary.
Yeah, which is why I was saying that's what we're going to court for.
I just wonder how valid that point then is to the argument we're looking at today. It doesn't look as though it really bears on the point as clear as it might.
No, but I think he's saying that the want of impartiality, sorry, the fact there is impartiality, is relevant to what is required. I don't think that's undermined by that example. I don't see how that undermines it, if I may say so respectfully, my lord. I can get that from other cases as we go along.
Well, we've reached four o'clock. I don't know that you're going to finish.
Runa Begum, no.
Five minutes, it would take longer than that, could it?
If I just give you the points on Runa Begum, as it were, if I just finish giving you the points on each paragraph without elaboration, which is my intention, then I would do it entirely.
Do you mind if we just have those points? Yes, please.
I'm in your lordship's hands, of course, in that.
Let's just have the points then.
Yeah, I'm grateful. Fifty, paragraph fifty, picking out again, he refers to a normal part seven decision, conventional judicial review sufficient. It seems to me that when he says a normal decision, he's obviously allowing that there always could be the exception. We think he would probably have in mind where another right was involved, such as Article Three. I think I mentioned that in opening. Paragraph fifty one cites the key quote from Bryan and is applying it. And fifty two, again, even though it's a question of Again, he's making the point I just made back to my Lord, Lord Collins. My Lord Collins made to me that it is a question of fact which was really in issue. And in fifty three, he is saying explicitly, a limited right of review on questions of fact is sufficient, in his view. Fifty five is important, and of course I'll come back to Kingsley. But Kingsley is utterly about fact. It's about the truth of allegations. Nonetheless, a board which indeed had been found to have been, to have prejudice shown by us, nonetheless was sufficient because of the nature of the scheme. Kingsley is important because it is entirely on the nature of the scheme that it turns. Fifty six, the key phases in the judgments, the Strasberg Court, which described the cases in which a limited review is sufficient of specialised areas of law, classic exercise of administrative discretion. It's not just specialised area. Kind of decisions are they referring to? Take them together. Do not take specialised too literally. It seems to me the court had in mind those areas, such as regulatory welfare schemes, customarily entrusted to administrators. When the court in Kingsley spoke of classic exercise of administrative discretion, referring to the ultimate decision as to whether Kingsley was a fit, proper person, not the particular findings of fact along the way. And then, as says Runa Begum, whether it was suitable was a classic exercise of administrative discretion, even though it involved preliminary files of fact. It still remains a case within the use of the phrase, classic exercise of administrative discretion, as it is being used there. National traditions differ, margin of appreciation, phrase that seems to have faded. And agrees at fifty eight, I did draw attention to this, the Beeson's difference. Do not agree with laws that test for whether it's necessary to have an independent fact-finder. Depends on the extent to which administrative scheme is likely to involve the resolution of disputes of fact, and finds that too uncertain. How long can we get into angels standing on the heads of needles? And at fifty nine, it does not matter that there may be many or few occasions on which they need to make findings of fact. The schemes for the provision of accommodation in Beeson, and he approves McClellan, Brattonor, Forrest on introductory tenancies, that will almost invariably be on fact. It's to do with conduct of tenants. It's the antisocial behaviour, probationary tenancies, and whether they're continued or determined. And that's exactly what that was about. The court should be slow to conclude at the end of that, or very briefly, just refer to four paragraphs, I may, of Lord Millet. Ninety four, he adopts the same point, extending the scope, requires modification requirements. A hundred to a hundred of one, Strasberg has accepted, may properly be made by a tribunal not itself possessed of the necessary independence, by measures to safeguard its impartiality and the fairness of its procedures in place, referring to that tribunal, and its decision, ultimate judicial control by full jurisdiction, and we get the same point, the nature of the decision requires. A hundred and four, that's so, he's saying the same thing as Lord Hoffman, don't read too much into specialised areas. And at a hundred and five to six, he takes the view, it is, the present case, subject matter was the distribution of welfare benefits, critically depend on local conditions, quality and extent of stock, level of reasonableness, any factual issue arising in the court of the dispute, even if critical to the outcome, just below B in a hundred and five, would be incidental to the final decision. In my opinion, the subject matter content demanded the decision be made by administrative officer, right of appeal to court on law only was enough. Although the, this is the last point I make, although the question involves the claimance individual convention rights, it falls to be decided on a case-by-case basis. I think it's the system which is the essential subject matter of the inquiry. Thank you for allowing me to...
Thank you very much indeed.
Rushed food.
We look forward to hearing from you further tomorrow morning, ten thirty.
We're a bit worried about sitting down by trial.